Hey, good evening and welcome to the June 29 Palmer Town Council meeting. Would everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which is one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, all councilors are present tonight and Councilor Lemieux is participating remotely. And so, next first item is visitors comments for items not on the agenda. Is there anyone with comments not on of items not on the agenda? Seeing none. Oh, sorry. Come on up, just identify yourself. No, just you, I think.
Steve Goddard here at Thorndike. First we'll talk about Church Street Bridge. Supposed to have construction started in May, July, almost, and nothing. What's going on?
So, the contractor is doing work. They are beginning the process of demolishing demolishing the existing bridge.
As of when?
As of right now. That's that's what they're doing prep work to do.
I haven't seen any activity there.
I walk down there every single day and I've seen trucks there for the past probably two or three weeks.
Okay, they're not they're not working on the railroad.
Nope.
I see ties there, railroad ties. I don't see anything that.
Separate.
Looks like a construction on the bridge. All right, so, nothing nothing else on that then. How about Converse Street School? What's the story on that? Nothing? Is it gonna be for sale? Is it?
I'm working on.
Is it gonna be a senior center? Or is it what's what's going on?
I I'm working on a couple of requests for proposals. I have not finished drafting them yet. Once I finish drafting them, they have to be published.
Uh huh. And what are the proposals?
One proposal is to see if that could be turned into a fitness and health center. And then the other one is for housing.
For housing.
I think the housing one could be a challenge because of the parking issue. So that's why I'm also writing the one for a fitness center. Because if that can be turned into an athletic and fitness center, that would also conform with the field use behind it.
Okay, so that's that's the issue. So it would be a fitness center sponsored by the town, not not a third party?
No, it'd be it would be a private party. We're seeking proposals from developers.
A fitness center. Okay, now, last meeting, there was something mentioned about there was some work that needed to be done in the school. I remember years ago, there was some roof damage and water seepage into the building. Is that?
Are you talking Converse Middle School?
I mean, if something was from years ago, it either got repaired or I'd have to look into it. I don't know of any current roof leaks at the school.
No.
No.
I just want to make it clear that the council hasn't yet voted on the if an RFP does go out, what it would be advertised for. Ryan's just putting some information together at this point, so we have not made a determination of that yet. But we also are getting cost estimates for different repairs that would have to be made in the building based on the reuse of the building. And they are quite expensive, so we have to look at that and see if that's.
Figure like $10 million?
It's a lot of money. I can't give you a number right now, but it's a lot of money. And, you know, I'm not sure that that's something the town can afford to do. We wouldn't obviously be able to afford to do it without probably a debt exclusion. And we have not discussed whether that's what we want to try to do yet at this point in time. But we have had numerous discussions about it and we know that that building has been sitting there for quite a while. And we do need to do something with it so it doesn't continue to deteriorate. So.
We keep spending money on it for heating and maintenance.
So there's very there's. So the there is money being spent, obviously, to heat it so the pipes don't freeze because that would be a a different problem. The maintenance is just more, if something comes up, it's being fixed if it needs to be fixed. But there is, I mean, that building's been sitting there for several years unused. And I did, some of the councilors did go into it after the Memorial Day parade and ceremony. And it it definitely shows signs of, you know, being left vacant. So it's something that we definitely need to figure out in the next couple of months.
Okay. Now, the other vacant school.
Can I say, you know, there's no magic wand that we can wave to make this transpire and happen. You know, I mean, if there was, if there was, yeah, well, still, whatever.
Slow wand.
It's easy to look on one side of the fence over to the other side and say the grass is green, you know. But it it it's not as easy as you you thinking it is.
But you gotta try.
And they have. It's not like they haven't. That's all, I'm just stick, you know.
Okay, the next vacant school is.
From last week to this week, nothing magically happened.
Okay, the next vacant vacant school is Thorndike School. That's been as vacant and that's been vacant as long as Converse Street.
Yeah, we we took a developer through there last week. We we take a number of people through there. They go back and they they try to do some math and see if they can make some numbers work. And and nobody has been able to make some some math, some some numbers work on that building yet. The last proposal I got was for eight units of housing at over $4 million in costs.
I think that's the last thing we need in Thorndike is housing. Low income housing. Like I I I've come up with a proposal last meeting there to put a senior center there. Of course, Mr. McNutt says it's not feasible. I don't know if there was any studies done on it. I see nothing wrong with a site there for a senior center. All the infrastructure is there. Century located in town. You people have talked about a senior center moving to the Converse Street School. Ms. Seiler talked about an override. You know.
I think one of the things that's really important for everyone to understand is, you know, since COVID, obviously, the prices of everything have gone through the roof. And construction costs are extremely high. And that is why, you know, you're seeing, not just in Palmer, but all over, that a lot of projects are not happening or people are not moving forward with projects because the cost of what when they started the project, what it was gonna be to what it is now is so much more. And, I mean, I have not personally been inside the Thorndike School. I think it's probably something that we should do because, again, that building has been sitting vacant for a very long time. And if, you know, visualizing and seeing what Converse looks like, I can only imagine that that school, you know, is probably in worse condition inside. So, you know, I understand that the bones of those buildings are are good, but they also, you know, are gonna be very expensive to fix. I'm not sure that the the senior center would get much more in square footage than what they have now, so then.
They'd have a lot more room there.
I don't I don't know. I don't know.
You also have to take into consideration the government regulations about asbestos and handicap, this and that. Again, you know, to me, my opinion, sometimes you're better off just get rid of the building and start from scratch. I mean, what what's the cost of getting rid of? I I went to school there, you know. All the pipes in the downstairs there are wrapped in asbestos and, you know.
That's what I'm talking, tear the building down. Not not move a senior center in Thorndike Grammar School. I'm talking tomorrow to Thorndike Grammar School. Sooner or later, it's gonna come down.
I don't think it'll ever fall down. They were built to last.
Well, somebody will burn it down, but I think something something has to, there's gotta be some movement on this.
We realize, we realize.
Kicking the cans down the road.
Well, sometimes it's.
Nobody's kicking the can down the road.
We are discussing it and again, we need money to do a lot of these things and it's not money that we have. We don't have millions of dollars lying around. And and people are people are struggling in this community right now and we have to take that all into consideration.
I'm sure if the council would be, if somebody came up, you you came up with a plan to us here. This is what could possibly be done with all the regulations and stuff that your government asks of you to do it, that we would be more than happy to do it. I I'd love to see the place turned into housing for veterans. Utilize, you know, but where's the realisticness of it? Are you gonna get money from the government? You know?
But we we understand, we hear you. I hear you.
I see $6 million in the stabilization fund, you know. Finally, we're getting.
There's 2.7, there's 2.7 million dollars in the stabilization fund, not $6 million.
That figure came up here. Two months ago, there was 6.7, $6.7 million in the stabilization fund. I don't know where it went. You took 2.3 out for the bridge. Is that correct?
It went into the nonprofits.
And what's left?
2.7 million.
2.7 million? Well, there's a figure of 6 million tossed out here by somebody.
I don't.
Man on the screen.
Okay, well, even if it was tossed out, he's saying there's 2.3 million left, so that's what we gotta go with. Or 2.7, I'm sorry.
And how about this free cash? I'm looking at the budget there, taking $500,000 out for some project, what are you calling it, revolving fund or the?
No, putting putting $500,000 into into stabilization and bringing it up to $3.2 million.
Okay. And what's in free cash? Is there a free cash account?
1. So there's a little over $1 million because he said there would be 300, $300 and something thousand left after we took the five, after we took the five, so 800 and something thousand. Oh, actually, there's more than that because we're appropriating a bunch of capital items from free cash tonight, potentially.
Okay, but.
Free cash, so free cash, free cash is not used to fund budgets. Free free cash is not money that you get every single year. So free cash is used for one-time expenditures. You don't, you don't build it into a budget because then you're in trouble the following year when that money is not available to spend. So.
Is there only one, one time you can dip into free cash or can you?
No, we can.
Anytime you want.
So it it gets certified every year, usually in, so the the fiscal year starts for July 1st, the new fiscal year. The town accountant closes the books, usually the books are closed October, November. Then they submit paperwork to the Department of Revenue, Division of Local Services. They free, they certify free cash and then the free cash balance is available to spend up until June 30, when the when the fiscal year ends. And so now, whatever money we don't spend in free cash will become part of the recertification of free cash. So free cash is money that you didn't spend from the prior year. And then it's if you, if revenues came in higher than what was estimated or budgets were not spent 100% of a budget is the simplistic way of explaining what free cash is. And so the tighter, the the more, if you're, if you, if you plan revenues, if you're very, if you're very conservative with revenues, you can have more free cash, which we tend to try to be conservative because we don't want to build, build a budget that exceeds our our revenues and then have a deficit, just like you wouldn't want to in your home. And then sometimes things happen during the course of the year where expenditures don't happen. So for instance, a lot of times, you know, if you have turnover in different, different departments and it takes a while to hire, those salaries aren't expended and so those type of things close out and they're on it and then they build into the free cash balance. But the balance that that the town has in free cash is very low considering, you know, our budget is, what, 47? $44 million. So, you know, a million dollars doesn't cut it as far as if something catastrophic happened or unforeseen, that money would be gone in a second and probably would not even be enough to cover something that was.
All the stabilization funds.
Yes, but again, that's not a lot of money.
All right.
Okay.
What, what, does the town have a bond rating?
Yes.
It has a very good bond rating. It has a double A1 bond rating.
Okay. Now, is the town carrying any debt?
Police station?
Yes, there is.
Library addition.
The town has a fair amount of debt.
Library should be paid, no?
I think there's like an addition or something. There's debt, there's sewer debt that's paid by the sewer, the sewer customers, and then there is some general fund debt. The police station, as someone just said, is the biggest, the biggest one.
How much is left on that?
I don't know. I don't have that information.
Before it's paid.
What?
The fact, right?
No, no, it was a 20, it was, it was a 20, it was a 20-year bond and I don't, I don't know what year. I don't remember what year it was built.
Five, six years ago?
No, it was longer than that.
2034, it was 14.
Goes fast.
Yeah, 2014.
Is this a state-funded bond?
So that'd be 2034.
No, it's paid, it's paid back by the, well, it's, they sell bonds on the, on the market, tax-free bonds. And is that what you're asking? Oh, no, they, it's, it's usually investment companies, so they, they go, go to market. People bid on the bonds and then they award the bid.
Okay, because I'm familiar with the state bonds, the state offers bonds for town projects like bridges and.
So state has like SRF and Farmer's Home and there's USDA loans. There's different, there's different things, but I think these were all, these were all general obligation bonds, so on the, on the market.
Okay, so the only debt left is the.
No, there's, there's a few different things, but the police station is the most, I mean, if you reach out to Ryan, he can give you a listing of all the debt or reach out to the town treasurer. She would have the the debt schedule and she could give that to you. I just don't know what the life, how much longer of a term there is to repay it. I don't have that information here tonight.
Again, I would be happy to meet with you and we can talk about the development of the Thorndike Street School. We can talk about town finances, happy to talk about all of those things.
Which is my concern is how long is, is this Thorndike Grammar School gonna languish there and deteriorate?
I wish I had an easy answer for you, but these are tough projects. It's, it's.
I'm gonna do something.
I I understand that.
You're wishing, hoping that somebody's gonna buy it.
No, I'm not wishing and hoping. I'm actively taking developers through there. I recently had a development proposal that was over $4 million for eight units of housing. If you do the math, that's a half a million dollars total development cost per each unit of housing. To even make your money back, you would have to charge $2,500 a month in rent. So that's easily not low-income housing. That would be some of the most expensive housing in Palmer.
Depends who's paying for it. If it's state subsidized, it's.
There, there's no, the state is not subsidizing $2,500 a month.
No, not 2,500.
Exactly. So, but I'm just saying that these are the challenges of a project in a building like that.
And how much is the town asking for that building?
As far as I know, nothing. Because that, that would further complicate of developer being able to make a viable project.
So I, I think we have to move on, okay? So I appreciate all your, all your comments and we know that we need to move forward with those two buildings. And we are, you know, we are have the, we are talking about some things and and Ryan has had developers go through. And like I said, if it, if the numbers don't work for them, they don't work. There's, there's nothing we can do. It's not about that we're trying to sell the property for too much money, that it doesn't make sense for what they're trying to put in there. So, but thank you for your comments. Okay, we'll be here. Anybody else? Sarah? Yeah, of course.
Hello, I'm Sarah Menard. I live over on King Street. I was just coming to ask, what is the status of the feasibility study for making this a railroad stop for Palmer? My understanding is that the state has a lot of grant money and that Palmer is one of the possible sites of a stop, but that a feasibility study would need to be done. But I haven't heard anything about the town council moving forward on that.
So there, there was money that was, that the governor put in her budget proposal that was then not moved forward by the House and, yeah, the House and Senate. And then there was just information that came out last week that they're going another avenue.
The capital plan.
And it is through Mastah. And so that 4 million, there was $4 million in the governor's original budget proposal that would come to Palmer. And so now that is in another vehicle. I don't have a lot of information on that tonight, but I know that there was a newspaper article just last week.
Okay, great.
About it, so hopefully, something will come from that. And, you know, this, this meeting is for budget, but at our July meeting, will I, well, I'll ask, what's that?
We'll probably have more.
More what?
Information by July.
Oh, right, I, I was gonna, on July, in July, I was gonna ask about us getting more information than sending a letter to the governor and Mastah regarding it, so.
So it is on the foreseeable future that the council council will be discussing it.
It's, yes, like I said, this just came out in the paper. I want to say it was like Thursday or Friday of last week, maybe. Okay?
Thank you very much.
Anybody else? Okay. There's no old business tonight unless you guys have old business.
Nothing.
New business, okay. So the first item is the budget, public budget hearing. And I will call, I will open the budget public hearing at 6:59. And if there's anyone from the public that would like to speak, Erica, you move first, so.
Good evening. My name is Erica Nato. I'm a member of the school committee and also a resident of Palmer. I thank you for allowing us to be here tonight to speak about the budget. I have a few things. Is there any time limit for?
Three minutes.
Of three minutes? Okay. So. We're all aware of the rising costs for everything. You spoke about it earlier. And the school committee, oh, first off, both the chair and vice chair were hoping to be here this evening, but with the last-minute schedule, they were unable to attend. So our concerns, looking over the revenues in the state receipts line, is in regards to the Chapter 70 allocation of the $500,000 to the school committee, where there is a line item for $550,000. So one of our questions and comments pertains to the additional $50,000 that could be put towards the school and where that amount of money is going.
Are you talking the increase in Chapter 70 money from, from last year to this year?
Uh, yes.
Okay.
And then another thing that we'd like to point out is, last year, in the fiscal '23 budget, the town gave the school an increase of 1.8%, which totaled $302,573. And this only covered the contractual salary increases and had nothing to assist with the non-salary related increases. And this year, the town's providing the school with 2.9%, which is that $500,000 that we assume is coming from the Chapter 70 funds. And again, this is only gonna be able to cover our contractual salary raises. We had negotiated with the PTA 3%, 2.5% and 2.5% increase with not knowing where, what we were gonna get for final funding from the town. I, we felt that the timing of the budget process seemed very, like, not a reasonable timeframe. We would have liked to have known what we were gonna get for a budget a little bit sooner so that we could make these negotiations with the teachers association, perhaps provide them with a little bit more funding. Additionally, we, without having the $200,000 for the out-of-district increase of the 14%, it's making it very challenging for the school committee and the school district itself. We are looking at cutting six positions. And we're hoping for a little bit more consideration with that. Let's see. One recommendation that I would like to make for next year is to allow for the school committee and/or the superintendent or the finance director to be invited and have a seat at the table as it relates to budgets. I know that the school represents a large percentage of the town budget. I think that it would be beneficial for us to have conversations in a timely manner throughout the year to assist with the budget planning and understanding of capital improvement projects that are needed for the school, as well as what we're looking at for costs. With our ESSR funds diminishing after next year, that's over $800,000 that we're gonna be losing. And as we know, with the pandemic, there was a lot of social, social and emotional needs for the students, for the teachers and administration. And a lot of our ESSR funds went towards that, adding additional resources at the school. And we can't just let those go. We can't just, you know, throw them away. So we need to come up with funding to sustain those programs for, for the students. So that's something that we'd wanna speak to you and the town about going forward next year. One question that I have is in regards to the police department increase. I totally support the police department. My husband's a retired police officer. I work for the state police. However, there was a 5.17 increase and the union negotiated a 3% increase. So I just wanted to know if the large increase is in regards to state mandated trainings or if it's for other costs? And the only reason I ask that is because of the state mandated 14% increase for the out-of-district costs are something that the school has to take on and why that wouldn't be something that's covered if the mandated trainings for the police department are. And then, lastly, as I said before, the school department is one of the majority of the municipal employees and we are receiving one of the smallest percentage increases for the town. So. Something we'd like to mention.
Can I ask some questions?
Do you want Ryan to respond to some of this stuff first?
Sure.
Okay.
Well, I mean, all I have to respond to is the police 5%. So, so yes, a lot of that is related to the mandatory post-training. And I can send you additional, more detailed information by email tomorrow.
I know about, yeah, I know about the post-training, so I just didn't know if that was what that increase was for, so, thank you.
Yeah, without that training, they, they wouldn't be able to maintain their certifications and they would no longer be able to be public safety officers.
I have a question.
Sure.
Hold on a sec, yeah, Matt, wait, one, Matt, one sec. Were you gonna respond to any other questions?
No.
Okay, go ahead, Matt.
So on numerous occasions in public meetings, I asked specifically if the school used ESSR money to fund.
Positions?
Fund positions that were going to be an obligation going forward. And we were told numerous times, no, that was not the case, that the schools were really good with the one-time funds and that we were not funding positions with the ESSR money, knowing that it was a one-time thing.
Correct, and we, and we are, and we are.
We just, you just said that, that you're using ESSR funds.
You used it for programs.
And programs.
So it's the same.
Right. So just as a part of the budget committee every year for the last, I think I've been on it now four years, there's been a clear line of communication between the school and between the council. And I understand that this year, due to the superintendent transition, that there has been a lack of communication at best. I know that as a member of that subcommittee, we asked for a detailed budget from the school and we keep on receiving just. And we keep on receiving just high-level um numbers, is all we're getting. Uh we don't care about student names, personal information, anything like that, but we, we're just curious on where all the money goes on the school level. And if all we're getting is just this account, this account, this account, it doesn't help us know and keep the school accountable if the school is now currently asking the council to be accountable for the town budget, if that makes sense.
Yeah, Matt, I, I agree, I'd say the last time we had a budget review was uh one slide uh that was presented to us with a few things. This was probably a year ago, well over a year ago. Um curious, some of the positions that you're talking to cut, are these long-term positions, new positions? You said six now, you guys are looking to cut?
Yes.
Because of no additional funding from the town?
So the s- um six positions, there's three um that will be cut from Old Mill Pond and three from Palmer High School. To fit in line with um our current um budgeted expenses.
Is that tied to enrollment too, or is that just budget?
Um I think that a pa- a portion of it would be tied to enrollment as well.
All right, um I'm only asking these because I hear your frustration, but we're probably more frustrated because we've asked for this information over and over and over, and we don't get anything. We've reached out to the town, to the uh school committee, we've reached out to the superintendent before. And we get high-level items like Matt's saying. So if you want to talk about the six people, I'd really like to see like how we got up to plus six, now we have to cut six. I'd like to see uh the, the programs that have to get cut because of the, no lack of ESSR funds. Um it's a one point eight percent uh you said last year?
Correct.
And this is a two point nine percent, s- but there was a what, you said negotiated three-point something?
Yes.
Okay, well, uh that's something we can't control, right? I mean, I'm not gonna
No, so
Further, but
So I think that
It's not fair to come back and say that we're not helping.
So I think that it would be beneficial um to have a better understanding of the information that you are looking for from us from a budget perspective, because I know Sarah has worked really hard um with providing the school committee with a detailed um budget that we were comfortable with um as a, as a committee to go over our costs. Um it sounds like maybe we don't all have the same information um about what's being requested.
I'm talking pre-Sarah, I have no complaints about what you're doing up there, I think it's awesome and it's long overdue. And it's kind of funny to see everybody scramble right now, so I truly appreciate that.
Yeah, she's done a great job.
From a transparency perspective, and I think the whole town appreciates that. Not just the council, not just once a year when it's budget time, but there's never been transparency as to where funds go. We approve something, a one-time, a, 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 what, last year, how many times did the school come back and ask for more money?
Sure.
How much did we, we gave a lot more than uh we budgeted for. Sure, we fixed the pool, we did a lot of extra stuff.
Yeah, we, last year, we, last year, we did about nine hundred thousand in capital just for the school.
Okay, that's outside of what was allotted for the budget, right?
Correct.
Thank you.
And I know we do have a list of capital improvement plans um that we had from when Amanda um was here, that she had. Um and I think that we were also using some of the ESSR funds for those projects um in addition to any additional funding that the town had given us.
Capital projects, I don't think we ever had.
So, um, so just to, I think, you know, we can only move forward, right?
Right.
So I don't want to get bogged down in, in what did or did not happen.
Yep.
But I do just want to address a couple of things, so first of all, the chapter seventy money, um I think that what everyone needs to understand is you can't just look at chapter seventy money increase to the, a direct correlation to the school budget because there's other costs that are not part of your budget, that are paid for, that are directly rated to the school. So health insurance isn't part of your budget, that's a big driver. Hampton County retirement for non-teachers is a huge driver, that, those are huge increases every year.
So you use that as part of the municipal budget to cover those funds?
You have, absolutely, you have to, so, so when the budget is built, you look at the whole revenue, the entire revenue picture. State aid, local aid, uh local revenues, um it's not just saying the school budget, chapter seventy goes bu- up by X, that goes all to you. Um because, y- you know, if you, if, if it worked that way, then um i- if that was the logic, then when chapter, if chapter seventy only went up two hundred thousand, then we should only give you two hundred thousand, and you wouldn't like that, because you wouldn't be able to survive. So it has to be looked at as a total picture, so that, that's, that would be what I would say about the chapter seventy. As far as the seat at the table regarding budgets, uh it is my understanding, as well as I believe the entire, the subcommittee and the sub, the budget subcommittee is made up of myself, Jessica, and Matt. And um our understanding is that uh the town manager did sit down with the interim superintendent and the business manager, or I'm not sure what your title is, Sarah, I'm sorry.
Director of Finance.
Director of Finance, so um my understanding is that did happen. Um and again, we, you know, I can only tell you what we, what we were under the oppression of. Um we were also told um that the five hundred thousand dollars that the town manager was proposing was a sufficient number for the school budget. Um that was told to us um again at our last meeting, which was last week. Um and that as far as capital items, we specifically asked, because there was no capital improvement or capital items on, that were brought forward to us from the school, we specifically asked if um there were any, and we were told there were none. So again, th- this is the, this is the information that we were operating with.
With the exception of paving the par- parking lots, which um because of the track project that's going on, um you know, I guess we're gonna shift the parking lot project to um next year.
Okay.
Due to the conflict with the Duke Track, because I think there were some questions in regards to
Right, so that, so they're gonna use it for a staging area, so we did ask that again last week as to um specifically, it was asked if we could just do so, maybe the Old Mill Pond section, since it's the Palmer High section, that's kind of being used for what I would thought, thought would be the staging area, but we were told that's not true. Um that the whole area is gonna be used for staging, and it would be problematic to the contractor for the track to have a paving project going on at the same time.
That makes sense.
And I apologize that that was not communicated, um we thought it had been. Uh as far as um you know, cutting the positions, uh we did not have that information. I actually had a conversation with Sarah right before the meeting tonight, and that's when I found out about the positions being cut. The um the ESSR funds, and I also had this conversation with Sarah, I mean, I think that unfortunately, the, the amount of federal money that was received by both towns and schools um has put both in a position where um there is going to be a, a fiscal cliff. Um whether you try to avoid it or not, you're still, even if it's a service, um as you stated, there are uh needs that exist now that did not exist pre-COVID, and unfortunately, those costs are expensive. And our, you know, our budget only grows so much. So those are definitely things that um we need to talk about. And I assume you're the new superintendent, so I look forward to having a conversation with you down the road, and welcome. Um so we have that. Uh as far as, you know, going forward, so the, the budget process was um a bit frustrating this year, um everything went very long and late, I mean, it's June twenty-ninth, and we're just having the public hearing, and we need to build we need to vote a budget this evening so that the town can operate come July first. Uh so I think that there is still areas of this budget that need to be looked at. Um I think that there, in my opinion, and I only speak for myself, are opportunities to have discussions with the new superintendent when, when he comes on board. Um and, you know, if the information that we have is not accurate, then I think those discussions need to happen. But also, given the fact that um there is, this budget is very, um you know, we, we looked at this budget very closely. Um the town is feeling the constraints of things also, the cost of um, you know, gasoline and oil and all of that. And I understand you have, it's the same thing on your side, um and we try to address all those things. Um I, I think that uh, again, I think communication can be better all around, and we can only work to improve that. But um I, I'm not sure that at this point in time, there is a there is a chance of us being able to just increase your budget by that two hundred thousand. I think there's, there's too many unknowns for me to feel comfortable with that. The other, the other issue that I see is we have a lot of very pressing capital needs. Um and they are going to be big-ticket items, and we need to put ourselves in a position where we can afford to do this. I mean, you heard conversation tonight regarding, you know, the bridge and, and the buildings, and that's not even like that's not even the tip of the iceberg, there are so many things that have to be done, and there's been maintenance delayed, and we know, everybody thinks the schools are new, they ta- still talk about the new schools, they're not new. But that is the perception, and we need to start addressing some of those things. So if there were capital items that were um important, that should have been talked about and brought to the budget subcommittee, I think we need to have that information given to us, because like I said, we did not get any capital requests from the school. Um I'm not sure
I would just like to echo everything that Barbara said, um I think we were incredibly frustrated with, a- as you mentioned, um the timeline of the budget process, how the schools were kind of incorporated in that conversation, we definitely hear you on that. Um I echo everything that Barbara said, uh especially when it comes to the capital plan. I walk my dogs up there almost every single day because it's, you know, a very, right now, it's a very quiet place to walk my dogs. And I can see that the schools are showing their age, and if not looking older than they should be. Um so I do know that, that, you know, the school has some pressing capital needs, and, you know, we, we just want to make sure that we understand those needs and have that plan, um because I, I think a lot of times across many cities and towns in Massachusetts, there's this um constant tension between schools and towns because of just being constrained by Prop two and a half and, and the revenues that we have. Um but I, you know, I can only speak for myself in saying that I'm very supportive of the students' needs, the schools' needs. Uh you know, I'm a product, a pretty recent product of the Palmer Public Schools, so um I've appreciated all of my time there, and I want to continue to see the students and the staff succeed there, so um definitely, you know, going forward with the new superintendent, um want to have those conversations, thank you.
Thank you.
I think it's also important to see where the cuts are being made too, and like, how is, how is the school addressing their financial issues, just like the town is? It's not come ask for more money, right, I can't do that at my job.
I think the one thing in regards to the two hundred thousand dollar request was that it was a one-time request that was going to get reimbursed seventy-five percent the following year, so I think that's why we were uncertain as to the choice not to support that.
So I, I tried to get an answer to that, at, there was one, I don't remember which one it was, but there was one meeting when Sarah and Colleen were there, and I think the principal or assistant principal from Old Mill Pond. And I, I had said, and I, I couldn't really get an answer, um I didn't see it as one-time, because the, the costs will continue to grow.
Right.
So, you know, a fourteen percent increase this year is then going to be, they're gonna increase next year, like the cost of tuition goes up every single year, not as drastic as fourteen percent. But I had said, all things being equal, and if all things were equal, would you need the two hundred thousand dollars next year? So all things being equal, the answer should have been no, right? Because you're gonna get the reimbursement, and that was not the answer. And Jessica and I both, um you know, came, we came to, we had the same thought process, and then we were sitting at the meeting, we both, we were both saying the same thing. Is that I didn't see it as a one-time, um I understand the reimbursement, um but I also brought up during the meeting that um and again, Ryan is, is going, going to look into this, but um, and I think I actually said it the night of the meeting when the school was there, is it seems to me like the Medicaid reimbursement is very low, considering that we are, you know, a full district. We're not just a, a elementary school, you know, we're a full district. And so I was questioning whether we are submitting everything we can for reimbursement. And so I'm, I, I know that there's a lot going on, and hopefully we can get that answer at some point down the road, but um because that would also help you, and it just seems low considering my background and what I see from another district, so um I don't know. And so, I, you know, again, I don't have all, I don't have the inside information, but these are things that I, I ask questions on, Jessica has a background, you know, also a municipal government, so we just see things from a different way. Um so I think that, again, we, we didn't see it as a one-time, and if it's, if we add two hundred thousand this year, and it really isn't one-time, then that just, that's more of a problem next year. So that's why I think it's very important for conversations to have, be had in the next, you know, month or so um with the new superintendent, with Sarah, and try to get a grasp on what he sees and what she sees. I think that would be very important and can be very productive.
I agree, um just one other point, you mentioned the capital plans um that are needed for the town. Um does the town have um any um projected plans, like a one-year plan, five-year plan, ten-year plan for those um projects?
We had made a, a five-year plan, w- it got stale very quickly. Um so yes, I'm working on a new capital plan, and I'm happy to include the schools. Uh we had a very long list of capital items from the schools, including the pools, the environmental system,
Right.
Uh stair tripping hazards.
Mold remediation.
Um we did all of those things, I worked with Fred Gerber. So part of the other challenge is, it wasn't just the superintendent that left, it was, it was pretty much the top leadership of the school simultaneously. And Fred was a great partner to work with, uh Anthony is, is a great partner to work with. Um I, I, I think he, you know, can get up to the level where Fred was. Um but yes, uh the schools, reevaluating what the new priorities of the school's needs are will be part of that capital plan.
Right, thank you.
I got a question.
Of course.
Uh our last uh school system, they're very important, it brings people into town, so I'm pro that. The last superintendent, my constituents asked me to ask questions. I, I asked her how many students she had at the beginning of her term, she didn't know. I asked, well, how much do you have now, didn't know. Her assistant did know, but a good manager doesn't have to know all the questions, but know where to get them. And it was significantly less, and it, it probably still is now in the school systems, and they want to know why the budget keeps going up with less students. But don't get me wrong, I'm for the school, for everything. And they also asked about uh me- mental illness, is there more counselors or something like this, because, you know?
I do know that they did hire more counselors because of the pandemic and the social, emotional needs of the students. And that's where we can't cut those individuals, right? Um so I think that's where we want to ensure that we have the um budget and support that we need to retain those individuals for the long term.
Yeah, because even years ago, they asked for more money for the lockers, and I'm going, what are you talking about? I thought visiting team broke them in the gym, but it was students out in the halls. W- when I went to school, I wouldn't dare do that, because it would make noise, and you would have to be disciplined for it. So, you know, that's part of the whole, uh not mental illness, but you know, discipline and
Yeah, and we
Being accounted for.
We recognize um the discipline concerns as well, we recently had a um survey that went out to all of the teachers, and we received the results back um at our last um school committee meeting. So I know that administration and superintendent are going to review the results of those and ensure that um their top priorities um are going to be taken care of and addressed.
Structure is important, yeah, thank you.
And you're welcome.
Thank you, Erica. Um Matt wants to speak.
Yeah, um the, uh, sorry, uh I just received an email, that's why I was just digging through my phone looking for it, from MMA, from the Massachusetts Municipal Association, regarding that the um, there's a special committee meeting, I guess, right, to discuss the budget for the state level, so I'm pretty sure that those funds are still on the, on the books, right? The chapter seventy and the increase for chapter seventy and the circuit breaker money, I think they're working on a deal right now, aren't they, still?
Yeah, so I, I, I don't, I don't think it's expected that they'll have a budget tomorrow, lest I know, so they, they're, no. So they, they did vote a one-twelfth budget so that they can operate as of July first, and then I would expect sometime in July, hopefully uh we would have good numbers.
Was there anything, was there anything in particular that ca- Was there anything, was there anything in particular that caused the um the this budget process to not be like it was in the past? You just mentioned like the tight restraints and you
It just went longer than it than it, we would have liked to have it hap- I mean, normally, we probably would have met last week. Uh, we would have probably had our public hearing at our regular council meeting in June and then we probably would have voted on the budget last week.
The school would have been here February, March.
Well, again, the the, you know, my understanding was, I mean, Ryan, you did meet with the school, correct?
Yes, so, um, the the way that it works here, right? And the and part of this is, you know, just from me, right? It's just my opinion. But when the town charter was written, I I think there was still some uh, legacy idea of the timeline for town meeting. Because I have to give the first draft of a budget to the town council the first week of March. So, I mean, there's a lot of assumptions that I have to make at the front end without having the data um, more sort of squared away to make more accurate uh, numbers, right? So then we use the budget subcommittee process to flesh out the the budget, right? Because we'll have better picture, like for this year, it, for instance, right, fuel costs and energy costs were the, were a major driver, right? The town went from nine cents a kilowatt hour to eighteen and a half cents a kilowatt hour. You know, and and we started to look at, you know, the expenditure reports throughout the budget subcommittee process. So I meet with departments, including the school, uh, ahead of that first week of March. So even meeting with uh, Colleen and Sarah and then meeting with them again after that um, is still very early in the year. So next year, you know, what I'm going to propose is uh, having very structured budget subcommittee meetings and having departments come in individually or or in sort of uh, maybe one or two departments of budget subcommittee meeting and then um, you know, that way the school can be a part of that and will be probably better informed of actual budget expenditures.
I think that would, I think that would be very helpful, um, because I'm not sure if that actually happened um, this year and um, I also would wonder when the first budget subcommittee was after you provided um, the budget.
Oh, yeah, I can get you that date. I don't remember off the top of my head, but I can get you that.
Right. So if we have those um, subcommittee meetings, you know, maybe in the next couple of weeks after you provide them with the budget, so it's not such a long time between meetings, um.
Mm-hmm.
That would be helpful.
Sure.
Um, but again, um, oh, go ahead, Matt.
So, uh, along those lines about cooperating and, you know, being involved in things like that, I love that. The thing is though, is that if the school would like input on the town budget, then I think that there should be reciprocation where the town has some say on the school budget.
Of course.
And and I'm not saying that we, hold on, I know everybody's probably jumping. But I'm not saying that the town have anything to say, but maybe recommendations. If the, if the school has recommendations where the town budget can be better, then maybe the town should be involved in the school budget to help and maybe have recommendations where the school budget can be better. And as long as we work together, I think that we can make this all, all of this process entirely better.
I agree. Thank you for that suggestion, Matt. I appreciate it.
Erica, I'm going to ha- ask you to suggest so, um, see if anybody else has questions.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Erica.
Anybody else? Okay. See, no, anybody from the council that didn't speak that wants to speak or don't feel you need to, but you good? Okay. All right. I will close the public hearing at seven thirty. Oh, actually, do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
Motion by Phil, second by Jessica, all in favor.
Aye.
Okay, we're, the public hearing is closed at seven thirty-two. Okay. Your kids were very good.
Yes. Didn't even know they were here.
It is hot in here.
Yeah, I I apologize for this. Um, we've, we've, we've had, I've had constant issues with the environmental control system in this building. Uh, the air conditioning happens in the wintertime. Uh, I'm working on it. I'm working on it.
You open the windows?
We change the clock.
It's ventilation.
It would be. Okay, so the next
Change the calendar.
The next item is uh, resolution twenty twenty-three thirty-two. This resolution, I'll have Bob read it in a minute, but what we are looking to do is so we are um, obviously, the work for the uh, the repairs to the track at um the school complex are underway. They will be completed um, before school starts, uh, which is great. One of the things that we um, as a council, said that we were going to do is we were not going to let uh, what happened to the current track happen again and that we were going to start putting money aside so that by the time the track needs to be replaced, we would have the money to do that. And so this is um, the first step to doing that, which is establishing a uh, stabilization fund. I know the agenda says revolving fund. That is a typo. It does, however, reference the correct statute, which is MGL, chapter forty, section five B. So I do uh, wish to move that forward. Um, so Bob, if you could read um, the resolution, please.
Certainly. June twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty-three, resolution number two zero two three dash three-two. Purpose to see if the town council will vote to establish a new stabilization fund under Massachusetts General Laws, chapter forty, section five B, to be effective on July first, two thousand twenty-three. Purpose of this fund is to provide funds for maintenance of Duke Track. Motion, move that the town of Palmer create Duke Track Stabilization Fund under Massachusetts General Laws, chapter forty, section five B, to be effective on July one, two thousand twenty-three. The purpose of the fund is to provide funds for maintenance of Duke Track.
Bob, will you make that mo- are you willing to make that motion?
Yes, I will go ahead and make that motion.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Second by Jessica. Any discussion from the council?
What is the tax revolving fund or something?
No, it's a stabilization fund.
Yep. That was just the wrong word on the agenda.
They put the wrong words, but they did reference the right statute for a stabilization fund.
I have a question.
Yep.
What funds are going into this? How is this going to get funded next year?
It's going to be, it's going to get funded this year as part of the budget vote and it's going to be through uh, raise it, raise it, raise and appropriate. So every year it'll be part of the, of the budget going forward.
So it's part of our
It is part of, it is part of, yes. And it hap- and we need to start now so that we have enough money when we need to resurface it, yeah.
Yeah. And that's this year. In the future, other funds like free cash or whatever, you know, appropriate one year, free cash another year. Um, those are different forms of revenue that can go into that type of stabilization fund.
Any, any other questions?
Not from me.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Matt, you want to just say your vote out loud since you're remote?
Aye.
Okay. Any abstentions? Okay.
Thanks.
I went right on it, did I?
Nope.
Okay. I said I wouldn't.
I'll just wait till after and I'll get it.
Okay. Okay. The next um, resolution is resolution twenty twenty-three thirty-five, which is um, the establishing the revolving fund spending limits. Um, this is an annual vote. And Bob, if you want to read that one?
Certainly. June twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty-three, resolution two zero two three dash three-five, purpose FY two thousand twenty-four revolving funds special limits. Motion is to authorize annual spending limits for the town's revolving funds in fiscal year two thousand twenty-four. Revolving fund, electrical inspections, account is two seven zero two four five one. The limit is one hundred and twenty thousand dollars. EV charging station, account number two seven zero one two three one, in the amount of ten thousand dollars. Gas inspections, account number two seven zero two four two one, in the amount of thirty thousand dollars. Legion Field, account number two four six five zero seven three eight, in the amount of five thousand dollars. Where am I here? Plumbing, thank you. Plumbing inspections, account number two seven zero two four three one, in the amount of thirty thousand dollars. Recreation Fund, account number two four six three zero five four eight, in the amount of ten thousand dollars. Sealer of weights and measures, account number two seven zero two four four one, in the amount of fifteen thousand dollars. Sealer of weight, I'm sorry, senior center, account number two four five four one zero zero eight, in the amount of thirty thousand dollars. Motion so moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor? Oh, sorry, go ahead, Matt.
Um, why do we have a revolving fund for Legion Field when all of the other field money is rolled into the DPW budget?
Yeah, what's this outside of that? Do we know?
Well, Legion Field takes in money for field use.
Ah.
Which is now being directly, I thought the rec director was scheming all that now. Or is that what you're going to use it for?
That's where the money goes and then the expenditures come out of that fund.
Okay.
But it's not the only field that we have to rent out.
No, I think, I think initially, initially, this was because people were charging to use the lights or the cost of it, for the cost of an employee to go over and turn the lights on and off.
Okay.
Any other discussion?
No.
All in, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Four to three. There you go. Okay, next is resolution twenty twenty-three thirty. Uh, so just background on this, so um, in the past, the the expenses for the revaluation were funded as part of the operating budget. Uh, that was not working the way it should though, because the revaluation expenses, the idea is to budget the, uh, it's it's so not to have spikes in the revow, so you don't do a revow, full revow every ye- every year, you do interim. And so to be able to carry these funds forward, so we can kind of have consistency in the budget, um, we are looking to um, move money that is going to close out in their budget this year from free cash into a special revenue account so that they can use that money properly. And this is something that came out during the budget subcommittee committees. Uh, and so this is, this will work much better for them and give them the access to those funds that they need so that they can um, perform both the revaluation and interim evalu- revow- revaluations. Any questions on that? Bob?
Resolution number two zero two three dash thirty, purpose to approve a transfer of eighty-eight thousand one hundred and seventy-five dollars from free cash to reeval- revaluation expenses, special revenue fund to provide for costs associated with revaluation, reassessment of real estate property in the town of Palmer. The motion is to transfer eighty-eight thousand one hundred and seventy-five dollars from free cash, account is zero one dash three five nine zero zero to revaluation expenses account.
I'll second.
Oh, did you?
Oh, I'm sorry, motion to move.
Oh, okay. That's okay. I was like, did I miss the motion?
No, you didn't miss it.
Just muscle memory.
Motion by Bob, second by Jessica, discussion?
Yeah, who gets this money? The eighty thousand?
So they hire, uh, they hire an outside consultant to be able to do the revow work that they need to do.
He gets the whole amount?
Uh, so it's not
He or she?
So it's not every, they don't get it in one year, so we're building up the balance to be spent in multiple years, but instead of having spikes that when they have a lot to do, the budget goes up and down and up and down, we're trying to keep it consistent.
And when do they uh, reevaluate a property?
So they do a full revaluation every five years and then they do interim um, assessments every year.
Okay.
Okay. And when they do a full revow, it costs more, it's more money than when they do uh, interim.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
Matt's was an aye.
Yep.
Is that an aye?
Yep. Well, he said yes, yep. Okay, so next is resolution, transfer of five hundred thousand dollars from free cash to the stabilization fund for future applications. Oh, sorry, Bob, I just read it.
No, it's okay. Go right ahead.
So, uh, the motion we need to transfer five hundred thousand dollars to free, from free cash to the stabilization fund. Is there a motion?
Yeah, I'll do.
Motion by Carl, is there a second? Second by Phil. Discussion?
I think from the uh, budget subcommittee standpoint, this wasn't brought to our attention. The only stabilization account that I believe we uh, discussed was the capital improvement stabilization account, uh, which we will be raising and appropriating money from. Um, so I just don't feel comfortable with this resolution.
For the reason being, you don't want to take free cash and put it into a stabilization account.
It was just, the, we never discussed it. So this is the first time we're talking about it right here.
There's no recommendation from the subcommittee.
Correct.
Based on that, I can't support it either.
The page with the changes?
Yes, this information was provided to the budget subcommittee.
I just, I don't see it. I don't see a harm of taking free cash and putting it into a stabilization fund or it's going to be
We did that last year at this time, right?
Don't you usually do that every year? You take money from your, your free cash to build up your stabilization account?
There's still
Yes, this would bring our stabilization up. I'm sorry, Mark.
That's a question I'm asking the council, the the budget subcommittee. Do you not usually take money from your free cash and put it into a stabilization account at the end of the year to build your stabilization account up?
Yes, we have.
Okay, so what's the issue? Just because
Just because you weren't told or?
Jessica had a, well, first of all, Jessica just had an opinion. So
No, it seems like the, the, the committee's rubbed the wrong way for some reason. But whatever. Anyways.
So, go ahead, Matt.
So it's in the changes that were included in everybody's packet, but the change only includes the amount of four hundred and eleven thousand dollars, eight hundred and sixty-four thousand. Because it says it was reduced to provide for the above changes. So for putting all that money into stabilization, um, shouldn't it be a separate line item because some of that money is going to be used for the changes discussed with the upcoming um, contract negotiations?
Matt, that that item you're talking about, that four eleven, that's the capital improvement stabilization. I think this resolution is for the general uh, stabilization account.
Was that in the budget?
I don't see where that is. I mean, I'm not trying to
I could have thought it was a line item. There was somewhere in the budget, there was a line item where it was being transferred from one account to the other.
I know it's been
Talking about it.
It's been a part of our thing since the beginning, so I I know the information's been provided at some point in time. Um, I don't know if we discussed it because I don't think it was controversial. I mean, again, so we have two point seven seven million, we have two million, seven hundred and seventy-two thousand, seven hundred and twenty-nine dollars in stabilization now. After five hundred thousand, you would have three million, two hundred and seventy-two thousand, seven hundred and twenty-nine.
Is that not like the safest place to put it?
So
For further, for further use down the road, stabilization.
So I, I mean, I'll just give my opinion and again, it's not trying to sway anybody, okay? You all do what you want to do. My thing, my opinion, and I, I think I said the same thing last year, is that I think that you should maintain a balance in free cash. Um, because rating agencies not only look at your balance and stabilization, but they always also look at your balance in free cash. Either is reserves, so you're right, Phil. It it it's still a reserve. Um, the
Takes more of a vote to get it out.
It's a two-thirds vote to take it out of, um, it's a two-thirds vote to take it out of stabilization fund, but my opinion, my opinion is also that if items come up like, um, you know, we don't have enough money for gasoline because prices skyrocket or electricity prices skyrocket. My opinion is that the proper place to not, is not stabilization to take that out of. Those are supposed to be more for capital items as opposed to operating expenses. So that's the theory that I operate on. Uh, and so, but yes, either way, it's money that's being set aside, so it's just a matter of whether you think it should be maintained in free cash or set aside into the stabilization fund. I mean, either way, um, and
I guess my next question would be to, so I can better understand, is, uh, is this five hundred going to devastate your free cash?
It put it down to, Ryan had said before the meeting, three hundred and something thousand.
Which is
So, yes.
Exceptionally low.
I, I don't think that would be wiping it out.
So what is an acceptable free cash account?
Well, we should probably have a financial policy.
Do we have a policy on how much should be in there?
We do not.
No answer on that.
Oh, I, I mean, I have an opinion.
Okay, I, I love, you know me, I love what-
Well, we should, I mean, that's-
What, what shouldn't the free cash be at?
Well, we, we, we should have a financial policy that has, has in it what percentage we want to maintain of the operating budget, and, you know, it could be three to five percent, it could be five to seven percent, there's all, there's different percentages, and I, you know, we would have to have discussions on that, and how, what that equates to, but in my opinion, it should be over a million dollars at a minimum. Agreed. Again, just my opinion.
Mm-hmm.
Any other comments? Okay, we have a motion and a second, I believe, did we?
Motion by Carl Williams, second by Phil Huber.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Oh, wait a minute, hold on, Matt, was that yes or no?
That's a aye.
Okay, opposed?
Aye.
So it fails, three to four, okay.
So, the only question that I have, does it fail, Barb, is that that money will be unavailable, right, because it will get certified as free cash?
Correct.
Yes, it gets, wait to be recertified, correct?
Correct, yes, so as of, as of June 30-
It is not accessible-
It'll be put into stabilization or available.
Long time in the near future.
With a two-thirds vote. So, yes, so as of, as of July 1st, June 30, after June 30th ends, that money will no longer be available till it's recertified.
But it would have been if it was in stabilization.
It would have.
Okay.
Yep. Next item is the Resolution Number 2023 for the Budget, Bob.
Give me one second, I'm at 31, 34, you say 33?
Uh, yep.
That's the next one, yeah.
Yep, I got it, I'm sorry. Resolution number 2023-33, purpose is to adopt the FY2024 budget. Town council meeting, date June 29th, 2023, where is the town council? Conducted a public hearing on the FY2024 budget on June 29th, 2023, after due notice was given, whereas the town council considered the FY2024 budget on an organization, organizational basis, and by vote so determined the size of appropriations for each department on June 29th, 2023, as listed and outlined in the Palmer final budget document, a copy of which is attached and will remain a part of this budget resolution as follows. Want me to go through these, Barb?
Yep, you do.
I was afraid of that.
Do you need a ruler?
No, I'm good, I got it.
Keep you on track.
Yeah, thanks, Jess. Department of Public Service, $2,183,594, Department of Municipal Finance, $501,756, I'm sorry, $501,756, Department of Public Safety, $3,108,102, Department of Public Works, $1,914,168, Palmer Public Schools, $17,612,183, Pathfinder, $2,43,892, Palmer Public Library, $917,058, Unclassified, $10,000, 508,964, Wastewater Treatment Plant, $3,491,805, total is $42,281,522. Now therefore be it moved and voted to raise and appropriate the sum of $42,281,522 to pay the town charges for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2023, and to raise through the collection of sewer fees, the amount of $3,491,805,000 for the wastewater treatment plan budget, $122,017 while raised in the general fund is funded through sewer fees. Also to raise and appropriate $10,000 to the OPEB trust fund, $134,004 to the capital stabilization fund, $110,000 to Duke Track Stabilization, $50,000 to tree removal and trimming, capital projects fund, $30,000 to revaluation, special revenue fund, and finally, $3,000 to tax title special revenue fund. I'll make the motion.
Is there a second?
A second.
Um, discussion, so just for the rest of the council, just things that were discussed at Subcommittee, just so you know why some of these are here, okay, so we do the $10,000 to OPEB, OPEB trust fund every year, the Duke Track Stabilization Fund, so that's the new item that I talked about when we budgeted for, or we voted to set up a stabilization fund, tree removal and trimming, that, there's a lot of, there's a lot of trees that need to be taken care of in town, and the, the committee felt like this was something that really should be expended until we can get, well, so that we have an annual plan to address some of these trees, and, and then the revaluation in the tax title account, these are, these will be raised each year going forward, so this is, this will be something that you see annually going forward, and these were, as I said before on the revaluation, these were previously in part of the budget, and by doing it, voting as a special revenue fund, it allows those funds to be carried forward from year to year, so that they can, we can build up a balance, and then we can adjust the balance as we see fit, based on how much there is in it.
Can you explain what unclassified is, goes under?
Unclassified, yeah, so unclassified is just a, a section of the, the, the general ledger that basically has like, health insurance, retirement-
Workers' comp.
Workers' comp, right, general liability, it's kind of like a catch-all of like, some of those larger items.
It, it can't fit in any one single department, there, there are charges that go across multiple departments.
Okay, thank, thank you guys, yeah.
Yep. Any questions? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so hold on.
Six to one?
Um, Matt, you voted yes?
Yes.
Okay, Phil?
No.
You voted no, okay, I'm just making sure, there was that motorcycle going by and-
Yes, that's why I paused.
Calling Phil's name.
Yeah, all right, so it's six, one.
There you go.
Zero, yep.
And mine.
Okay. Okay, next item on the agenda is Resolution 202331, which is to transfer $100,000 from free cash to the tax title expense account, a special revenue fund, and again, this is to the same thing that we did with the revaluation money, this is to move the balances into the right area of the budget by a vote of the council, Bob?
Resolution 2023-31, the purpose is to approve a transfer of $100,000 from free cash to tax title expenses, special revenue fund to provide for costs associated with the costs associated with the process of tax taking. Motion is to transfer $100,000 from free cash to tax title expenses account, motion so moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Jessica, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions, six, one, zero.
Did somebody, against it?
Yeah.
Okay, I missed that.
Yeah. Okay, next item is Resolution Number 202334, which is to approve the town manager's 2024 capital plan, Bob?
Resolution Number 2023-34, purpose is to approve the town manager's recommended FY2024 capital plan as detailed below. Motion is to adopt FY2024 capital plan in the amount of $858,349 as follows. DPW backhoe, $177,522 from free cash, DPW wood and tree chipper, $84,765, free cash, DPW tandem roller, $25,507 from free cash, DPW is trailer for tandem roller at $5,794 from free cash, DPW field conditioner, $45,966 from free cash, DPW baseball, softball turfis material, $9,168 from free cash, DPW again, slope mower, $117,627 from free cash, police cruisers, $135,000 from free cash, police dispatchers consoles, $170,000 from free cash, police mobiles and portables, $57,000 from free cash, and town manager police computer replacement, 20 units at $30,000 from free cash, for a total of $858,349. Motion moved.
Is there a second? I'll second it. Discussion?
Police cruisers, why, is that not always in the regular budget every year for-
It used to be, yeah, I think it got moved out last year, was the first year, there were discussions by the Subcommittee that we would like to see that put back in next year, because it's an annual expense, it's not a one-time expense.
Two every year or something?
Yeah.
Correct.
So the $10,000 for turfis, why isn't, I'm assuming that's Chase High School, not Chase, sorry, Legion High School?
It's a bunch of fields, yes.
It's only those two fields, actually, and the softball field maybe at the bottom of high school, why isn't that part of DPW budget? Because that's an annual thing, this is drive to Boston and get the special mix and-
Yeah, I, I've, I've never seen it before, I think this is actually the first time we're doing it, so it's not ever been part of the DPW's operations.
I have questions on that one. Also, we talked about some other items that aren't on here, does that mean that it's not going to be part of the plan, or?
I mean, I, I'm still getting some pricing for things like the, what we want to do at Chase Field.
So, I'm, last year, we were in the same situation where there was money set aside for fencing at Burley Park, and we decided, we're going to move that, we're not going to put it in the plan, we're going to move it and use it later. This year, when we came to talk about that, early, beginning of this year, when it was budget time, the money wasn't there, so, at least for that, not that I wanted the fences, right? So I'm just more concerned now that stuff that's not on here isn't going to be considered. Does that make sense?
You can make an amendment.
But does that make sense to everybody, or am I just talking out my ass here?
That makes sense.
No, it makes sense, obviously if you were looking at-
I think last year, we asked for clarification on some items, and so we, I think we trans, we took the whole amount and we put it into stabilization, and then a lot of those items did not come back to be voted on.
We did a lot of machinery and equipment votes, but I don't remember a lot of the other things, so. Uh, I don't know.
But it doesn't mean that, it doesn't mean that we can't have a vote at our July, at our July council meeting for-
Well, I'm just, I'm sure, because the original plan was a lot bigger, right, with a lot more stuff in it?
This plan?
Yeah, wasn't it, like a big spreadsheet, no?
I don't think so, I think the, okay, I'm trying to remember, so the, the, um, the parking lot, the park, well, the parking lot was on there, and that was taken off because of-
There's Burley stuff that's not on here too, like the basketball court and other stuff.
Yeah, so we, we had asked for that to be removed, but where's the, um-
And then the fences at the cemetery.
You took those off.
Fences on the cemetery aren't on here, see, I'm not crazy.
Yeah, I think this, this budget, right, it's a capital budget, wouldn't necessarily call it a plan, but has morphed several times since we started these discussions, for, for various reasons, whether it was priorities, or cost, or quotes from vendors, not enough information that, you know, came up a couple of times.
That's fair.
So.
I guess as long as there's a next step for those things not on here, is my concern.
So, and I can tell you can't hear us, right, even though-
Oh, I'm, I'm very soft-spoken guy.
It's supposed to be transmitting back there, can you tell Barry if it is?
It should be.
Yeah, so-
It is a little bit.
Okay.
You're louder than me.
Just with the windows open, my ear will-
Okay, okay, I'll try to, I'll try to talk into it, he gave it away when he came to the front row.
He was right, I saw it.
So, the, as far as Chase Field-
Or even the fencing, or-
Oh, no, so, so as far as Chase Field, though, we were told at our last meeting that we were, that they were getting pricing for different things, and so at that point, we thought it would be best to wait for that pricing, and then we could always deal with it in July at the meeting, at that point, it would have to come from stabilization fund, but it's still, it's a capital, it's a capital project, so, I mean, that can definitely happen, but it, it seemed like we didn't have, that the number may change, I don't know, and so that's why we, that's why we took that off.
And then, what about the fencing and all the other stuff that we walked around and-
So the fencing-
That's going to be another vote out of?
So the, I, I mean-
I was asked to, uh, there was a particular fence company, I was asked to provide a quote, I'm trying to schedule them.
Okay, so, not enough information, okay, I'm fine.
And then the, the basketball courts at, at Burley, we had just questioned in general.
I'm just wondering, it's not on here?
Yeah, but those are the only things that came off, right, that I'm aware of?
There was like a digital sign.
That's it, well, yeah, the sign for the school.
Sign for the school.
Which was very expensive and didn't seem to be a priority at this time, so there was a sign that was over a hun- $100,000 for a digital sign, and it seemed like a lot, that we should explore other options.
Instead of redoing the brick or something, right?
No, it's instead, so the sign, like, now they have to put the letters up themselves, but it was over $100,000, and we need, I think we need to look into that.
Priorities.
Yeah, I think we need to look at that a little bit more.
I'm fine.
Okay, I have a motion and a second, right, and we're in discussion?
Yes.
So, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Opposed?
Uh, no, I'm just, Matt, were you for or against?
For.
Okay, your hand go, it, it kind of is like delayed a little, and I can't tell.
So is that six, one?
Six, one, zero, yep. I don't want to write on that.
Thanks. Um, I do have a question, I know we're past all this stuff already, let me scroll here, this stupid thing, um, I, I'd like to hear comments on those opposed to the spending limits. The what, Mark? The revolving fund spending limits, there were some opposes on that, right?
Yeah.
Who opposed that?
Jessica, myself, and Matt.
Can I just get your opinion on why that's a fail?
So, the, the revolving funds came up a lot during the Subcommittee meetings, and one of the issues that we did rectify was that 25% of the revenues were being transferred out of the revolving fund and into the general fund, and that is a violation of, you know, mass general law, and that, that's also, I think fundamentally goes against the purpose of a revolving fund, is that, you know, all of the revenues go in and sustain and support whatever activity comes out of it, and then we also had questions on the validity of, of using some of the revolving funds for some of the purposes, like mainly the electrical inspections, gas inspections, plumbing inspections, and-
Sealer.
The se, yep, the Sealer of Waits and Measures, that I just feel like we didn't, we didn't come to a real conclusion on, you know, whether we're doing the right thing or not, so that's why I withheld my support.
I'm not trying to put you on the spot, I'm just curious, educational purposes only.
I appreciate the question. The question.
Matt, did you want to comment?
No, there were questions. I voted for it only because I knew that those questions weren't going to get answered at this meeting. And I know that we have to move forward with the budget process. But yes, there... I anticipate, and I was going to make the comment earlier when we were voting on it, but I anticipate in the near future, if not within this fiscal year or before the next fiscal year, there will be changes to the revolving funds.
But you voted no, Matt, right?
No, I voted for it.
Oh.
Oh, okay. Maybe a lag.
I had that recorded as I know.
Yeah.
So, that was...
I'm just going to wait for you to call on me because there's definitely a delay.
Yeah.
There's a thirty-second delay on the video on YouTube. So, I can see everybody, but it's not, so you know.
Okay.
Okay.
Gotcha.
So, what's the recommended percentage that should stay in?
A hundred percent of the revenue is supposed to stay within. And like I said, we did rectify that issue. So, that part's okay.
So, I have a... we sent a question into Dave Guzman to clarify whether these particular revolving funds are applicable to what we learned about the recreation revolving fund? I have not heard back from Dave Guzman yet.
No, it wasn't recreation. It was the... it was the animal control.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. Yes, correct.
Because we do have a recreation.
Right. Yeah. So, yeah, we're just checking with Dave Guzman. And then secondly, you know, it... this... These inspectors are vital for our economic development. We will not be able to do any projects whatsoever if these inspections can't happen. Also, private parties like homeowners and stuff will not be able to get permits and their things done. So, we have to... if it comes back that we do need to make this change in the way that we compensate the inspectors, it has to be a conversation that the inspectors are part of and they accept.
At no time did I suggest that we were going to eliminate the inspections from the community. I understand that they are required. I think we were just thinking of best practices.
Yep. And that's what we're looking into.
Right. And just, I mean, I won't repeat everything Jessica said because I do agree with what she said. But I felt that the proper way to do it was to have budgets for those four departments and then to bring in the revenue as a local receipt to offset the expense. But anyway, so that was the reason. Okay? Subcommittee reports? I don't believe we have any. Miscellaneous correspondence? Anybody have any?
Well, we all received correspondence on the Lake Thomas Thompson. And I don't have a response. I don't know what we as a council can do to influence state law.
So, we have no... we have no role. The abatement period is over. The individuals who filed an abatement, they were either... Their abatement application was either denied or approved, or they got some type of adjustment. It might not be everything they wanted. If they were denied or if they're not happy with the decision of the Board of Assessors, they are able to appeal to the appellate tax board. They have three months from the date of the denial to do that. I don't know what the dates were that they... they're, you know, I don't know what the time period for that is. I did reach out. I know there was two different emails. Well, I got two emails. I got one email from one individual there and then we got the second one that went to everybody... went to all the counselors. I did reach out to the individual that emailed me originally and told him that I would be in touch soon. And I think that, again, it's very difficult because we do not have the power to do anything with those... the assessments and, you know...
I think that's my frustration. This is the third time it's been stated that take it to town council. When we had the meeting over here at the police department, that the person giving the presentation pointed to us and said, there's your town counselors. Talk to them. Right? Came up another time. And now, this is the third time in email with quite a few people on the email. So, I just want it clear that it's not up... we can't change it. We can't do anything about it. It's outside of our control.
Right. But I will... I will... I will reach out and see. I just... I... with my work schedule and I was traveling for work, I did not have an opportunity to do that yet. But I will.
I did... I did respond to the individual stating that, you know, I didn't have enough information to basically respond to his issue and that we would look into it a little bit more. And just so you know that this person has been responded to.
Perfect. Anybody else for correspondence? Counselors' roundtable? Everybody? Seeing none? Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Motion by Phil, second by Bob. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Matt?
I was saying, give it another twenty seconds.
Now, we got it down. All right.
On the last vote.
Thank you and good night.